Tom, you don't want to sit next to me.
I need John Paul to sit down.
Do you have a seat for our student right? You're at the very end.
There you are.
You sit right there.
I don't know whose things are there, but that's your seats.
Do you need him to close?
Well, we don't know. He hasn't sat down yet.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The Board of Education meeting will now come to order. Again, thank you to the Franklin campus for allowing us to use their facility. We are going to begin with an act of reverence and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Willa Powell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. We have a number of commissioners that have conflicts tonight, so that's why I'm moving rather quickly through the meeting. And instead of changing our meeting date, we just decided to keep the meeting and try to move our meeting in an expeditious manner in order to not way to confusion our calendar. With, I'm gonna move up the consideration of resolutions. We do not have any speakers addressing an agenda item. And I want to make sure that all the commissioners that want to be present as voting get the opportunity to do that before they have to take leave. So I'm gonna move up the consideration of resolutions. And with also the consideration of resolutions, I'm gonna also ask a motion to achieve, approve the Student Activities Fund Report and the monthly financial statements first. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Point of clarification, both the Student Activity Report and the Financial.
Yes, along with the, yes.
Second.
Was that a second? Second. Any discussion on the Student Activities Fund Report or the monthly financial statements, which we're reviewing, which you should have gotten in advance in your board package? Questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the Student Activities Funding Report along with the monthly financial statements, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The monthly financial statements and the Student Activities Report are approved. One last quick order of business. I want to recommend a quick committee change. If there are no objections, moving Commissioner White from the Finance Committee to the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee and Commissioner Williams from the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee to the Finance Committee. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns, or clarification? Any, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate it by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner White is now on CIGR and Commissioner Williams on Finance. We have no speakers addressing an agenda item, so I'm gonna move up to the approval of resolutions. We will begin with the Human Resources Resolutions, numbered 544 through 572. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any discussion? These are Human Resources Resolutions. Hearing none? All those in favor for Resolutions 544 through 572, please say aye.
Aye.
Next up are Educational Facilities, Resolutions 573 through 583. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Campos. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Any questions, comments, or concerns on Resolutions 573 through 583? Hearing none, I will then call the question. All those in favor of Resolutions 573 through 583, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes on Resolutions 573 through 583? Any noes? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Six oh, Educational Facilities, 573 through 583, passed. Resolution 584, Procurement and Supply. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 584?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Campos. Any questions, comments, or concerns around Resolutions 584, Procurement and Supply? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Resolutions 584, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 584 passes. We will now move over to the category of other, which is Resolutions 585 through 599. Is there a motion to approve 585 through 599?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Any questions, comments, or concerns around Resolutions 585 through 599? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Resolutions 585 through 599, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Resolutions 585 through 599 pass. Thank you very much.
I just want to make a note that I, on 595?
Yes.
I vote no.
595, Commissioner White votes no, Madam Clerk. I mean Commissioner Williams votes no. You know what y'all look like, I was kidding. Is, did you capture that, Madam Clerk? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Please make sure you capture that, please.
Okay, that concludes resolutions. I want to thank Commissioner Powell and Commissioner White for rearranging their schedules to attend this portion of the meeting so they can have their voices recorded. Thank you.
Mr. President, I want to thank yourself and I also want to thank the other board members. But most importantly, I want to thank the citizens of this community that would allow us to leave as we understand we have other obligations and responsibilities. I just want to know for the record, I've never missed a board meeting. And sometimes that does happen in the course of our responsibilities. But today is a very important day. I know I'm gonna embarrass her, but my daughter and I, and look, she's going dead, are going to Howard University to check it out. And we're getting on a plane at 7:25, so good night.
Where's Commissioner Powell, I mean Commissioner Williams?
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, Commissioner Powell, point of personal privilege.
Before I also escape, I just want to call attention to a donated item on Resolution 597 to, of $31,000 in cash and products to John Marshall High School. That's a very large and generous donation. And while I have the floor, a word of thank you to Susan V. Anthony House, if there's anyone still here representing, and to our staff, Jackie Morgan, Joanne Feen, and Hazel Washington, who allowed our ceremony to proceed without a hitch, even though some of us didn't make it in time for the open of the ceremony. So thank you so much for your hard work and good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Mr. President, just, I'd like to, I don't know, not that it'll make a difference, but on Resolution 585, I'd like to record my vote as abstaining.
585, and because you are a member of the board, correct?
Yes, I'm a member of the board, you are.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, have you captured that? Thank you, Commissioner Williams. We will now move back to the other items of our agenda. We have some minutes before view. They are minutes representing February 28, 2007. Is there a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Campos. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Any additions, deletions, or clarifications on the minutes? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the February 28, 2008 Monthly Business Meeting Minutes, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are passed. We will now move to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Superintendent, you have a report for us today?
Yes, I do. Possible for us to go sit back and?
Yes.
Thank you.
Colleagues, you can join in the front row so we can see the screen.
Yes, another PowerPoint. I believe it was back in January, we gave a preliminary report of the status of the class of 2008. At the time, we said we didn't have the fall semester scores, Regents examinations, et cetera. Now we've got updates as of March 2008. So it was important to give the Board of Education and the community an update to where we are, the class of 2008. But before I actually get started, I want to think one group of people were here. And I would say that if the back office operations is transparent, then it's working really well. All the technology you see, the videotaping, the broadcasting on cable television of this meeting is not done easily when you transport everything over to a different site. So I want to think Tom's group and the guys who are here videotaping, all the equipment you see here, again, no one thought about this, but it happens. It's not by accident. So what we've done, we've often talked about making it personal. And again, I want to apologize for the reactive stance of the class of 2008. We started this work a little late, coming in January 2nd. But moving forward in coming years, you'll see us be much more proactive about attracting students from the moment they walk into ninth grade to making sure they're graduating on time. So what we've done is collect quite a bit of data on the current class, working with guidance counselors and principals of schools to get an update as to where each student is. And of course, putting in the interventions in place and making sure that as many graduate as possible in this current year. So as you know, we're still migrating our data files from SIS to Chancery. We still have a couple of years left to migrate. And the hope is that by next, by next fall, all files will exist in one database. When we reported back in January, we only looked at active students. This time, we asked our research department to look at all students who were part of the cohort. Dropout, GED, no idea where they are. But every single student who was part of the 2004 cohort or the class of 2008 are now included in this dataset that you'll be seeing. We looked at the data in two different forms. Students on track to graduate this year and those who are not on track. If you take a look, we look at the number of credits students have earned thus far and their possibility of passing courses this semester and the summer to get a high school diploma. When it came to the Regents examinations, we looked at the fact that students had to have passed all five Regents by the end of January to be considered on track. It does not mean that they cannot still take exams this June or this August. So those numbers may be a bit smaller than what they'll actually be. Because again, we're assuming that they had either passed all five or have not passed. If they failed one Region or the Regents examinations, we consider them off track for graduation, although they can still pass that one test this June or this August to be marked on track for graduation. We define GED, of course, as students who are enrolled in a GED program. And a dropout is a student who has left school and is not currently enrolled in either a GED or regular high school. When you pull all this data together, looking at students who are either enrolled or have dropped out, this is the progression of our schools, all of our secondary schools in our district. With Applied Technology at the bottom of the scale, with 25% of its current cohort on track for graduation this school year. And with School the Arts at 82% on track for graduation for this school year, with an RCD average of about 42%. Again, it does not mean that 42% will graduate. With the interventions in place, that number should be higher come June and come August. But clearly, you can begin to see where the work is for us as a district when it comes to making sure our students graduate in four years. Again, we're not looking at students who graduate in five years or six years. Many of our students do take more than four years to get a regular high school diploma. When you begin to see this progression, again, you can see clearly where the work is for us as an administration. As a district, what you see is that we have 1,589 active students in the cohort. 957 have met the Regents requirement for graduation already. 632 need to take at least one Regents exam to get a high school diploma this year. And those numbers here begins to show you where those numbers actually fall. From there, my father's, from there you can begin to see where the numbers are by different content, by different subject. And of course, you begin to see that history is where we need to do the most work. US history is there, of course, because many students have only taken it once, have not had multiple chances, as we've had with the math or the other exams. But global history, on average, tends to be the exam that most of our students tend to fall apart on most. So global and US, where we have the biggest issue. In the bar, in visual form, you can begin to see, again, global history and US history are where we do the most amount of work. Now, what we've done, of course, is Connie Leach and the team at RET and Marilyn's team have been meeting with principals one-on-one and looking at school individually, sitting with principals, looking at where they are, where each student is who's part of the class of 2008, and the kind of work that we need to do to begin to push them toward completion. The one school, of course, and we always have this disclaimer, School Without Walls is self-reported, because you know they are portfolio school. They don't take regular Regents exams like the rest of the district. So again, everything they give to us, very often is self-reported. But to go through this kind of quickly, in the board, you have this, and every school now has this information by student. And as you look at each student, we can begin to determine the kinds of interventions we need to put in place for each one as they march toward graduation this year. I'm not gonna sit and wait. But in terms of our timeline, once we've done this, you can see March 17 and 18, met with principals. We review, again, we talk about making it personal. We boil it down to the individual student. Schools with their chiefs come up with a plan of action on how they're going to provide the kinds of academic intervention services for every student. Plans are reviewed, and we expect all AIS support to be in place by April 7, 2008. We're talking about credit recovery. We're talking about Regents examination. If we need be, we will go to community-based organizations to, again, enlist the help of our community in pushing and getting the word out that starting April 7, that all of our high schools will have either extended day or Saturday help for Regents prep as well as credit recovery. You may have seen in the paper last week, headline about the East High School Evening Program. And if you read the article closely, you will have noticed that the goal is not to eliminate the opportunity for students who are not making the grade during the day, but the goal is to move the program to every school in the district. Because I firmly believe, and again, I've had extensive experience in doing this, that AIS belongs to the day school. When you have students migrating to one central location at 6:00 PM and then when they're leaving school at 2:00 PM, you're giving students three to four hours of opportunity to disengage and not come back to the evening program. But if you go to school 8 to 2 and you finish at 2:00 PM, your extended day can start at 2:15 and go on until 4:00. It provides opportunity for kids to go to work if they want to and at the same time, stay in their home school where they are known well by an adult or adults. And that kind of follow-up can exist. In our conversations, we've actually asked the schools to even enlist and pay a guidance counselor to be part of the extended day program. So someone can make the calls, someone can be available to push in the conversation as well as getting the kinds of clerical help needed to call parents of students who are enrolled so they know if the child is not showing up or showing up. I've also asked that principals put these extended day programs or classes on the student's day program card. So it appears to be one program card, not an add-on, but part of the school day. When you have that, and again, the experience I've had, when I closed the seven evening high school programs in New York City and moved the program to an extended day, we doubled the number of credits earned by students in one year. So the fact is, it does happen when you have that kind of personal attention to this. Moving forward, of course, we'll have a tracking software that'll be in place by September to begin to watch students, to watch the cohort from the day they walk into ninth grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I just want to say, my first reaction is, wow, this is excellent. The fact that, you know, you talk about making about every single child, and I think that this really does that. I mean, we have numbers here, there is no excuse why that one student at School the Arts that needs that ELA exam, why we can't identify who that person is and make sure that they get there. And I know that we have some strong educational leaders in our principals. And I know that they will do everything it takes to call the numbers of students in their schools and get them to that next level. In terms of this presentation, do you think that this will be on the web tomorrow? I think that this is?
We can do that, Tom.
Excellent presentation for the community to be able to see, particularly in terms of making it personal. I just had one quick question, then I'll open it up to the rest of my colleagues. We're saying that the district is, on average, if all else fails, if we decide, if we said we're not gonna do any more work for the rest of the year, the district's graduation rate for the cohort of 2008 will be 42%. So conceivably, this could be much higher if between now and the end of the year, for example, Edison Applied Technology pushes up their rate. School the Arts gets theirs from 82 to 100%. That would increase our overall graduation rate for 2008.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, these are unordered numbers by the New York State Education Department. But based on our data infrastructure, if we shut down schools tomorrow morning and did nothing else, our graduation rate should be at least 42% for this accountability cohort.
And then the last question before I turn it over to my colleagues is, the, in terms of information going out to parents, I know you sent out that last letter that told them exactly what it is they needed, what each student needed in terms of graduation to meet the requirements. What other types of communications are gonna be disseminated throughout the school community to parents and students to make sure that they know where they stand exactly?
Connie, are you here? Talk a little bit to that, if you have a mind.
Yes, we have a data sheet that every student who got was the, the principals right now are completing their plan. They will be giving us their plan before noon tomorrow, which we will be reviewing. As part of the plan, prior to them giving us that information, they have to have had a conversation with a counselor. And they have to bring the student and the parent in to sign the data sheet, which commits them to the intervention that will be put in place to support them. So apparel will be part of the process when the planning and implementation is in place.
And lastly, I'm just gonna throw my hat in the ring to volunteer tutoring, to US history. You know, my favorite subject in school, I don't know why any kids are, it's just so important. Wilson at Magna High School, I have to call the principal and let her know that I'll stop in maybe do a couple of sessions for US history.
Well, thank you. Connie, can we organize that?
Definitely.
And get a call out for volunteers for tutoring at the high schools?
Definitely.
Great, thank you.
Let's start with Commissioner Brennan. Any questions on the presentation?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos, any questions on the presentation or comments?
No, just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams, any questions or comments on the presentation?
Just one. In terms of the follow-up and the monitoring, who does that? Is that done at the school level, at the district level?
The answer is both. It's important that the principals own this information. And if you take a look, this you don't have, I can get you a copy of this as well. We have spreadsheets where giving students, we're giving principals their projected dropout, kids who are in GED, active, off-track, and they have a list by student. And it's important that we give that ownership to principals with the right kinds of oversight from the district. Because again, when principals understand that they own the accountability for this. And although we are being reactive now, but starting in the fall to making sure that every semester of every grade of every year, those questions come back and keep pushing data at principals to where each kid is, it will become, again, much more personal and the ownership, again, will live at the school with the right kind of oversight from us. The software system that we're looking to put in place is one that I created when I was in New York City called Datacation. And what it does, it actually looks at a student's progress toward graduation from day one. It queries the current program card to see if they're taking the right courses as they march toward graduation. So the kinds of issue I believe we experienced a few years ago where one school forgot to give a particular course work for graduation should never happen again as we move forward until next year.
And last, the last thing.
Yes.
In terms of the overall intervention, I mean, where is that? Is that designed, is it school-specific or is it done from the district on down?
At the school's specific. This is why it's important that we do this at individual schools, because the adults there know these kids. And one of the reasons is that I am not a fan of creating centralized AIS programs because the adults don't know these kids really well. So if they're coming to Franklin Bioscience, the principal knows who they are. The classes will be held here, teachers. But in places like this building, it may be worthwhile to consolidate where necessary, because you have three high schools in one building. So consolidating in one building where you have multiple small schools is certainly something we would welcome to do as well. But again, I really feel that principals need to own this work. It is their work.
Thank you. Our student representative, Ms. Washington.
My first question is, if you do choose to close East Night School or so to upset everyone?
Well, the idea, again, we're not looking to close the opportunity. If they want to take the credit recovery opportunity, they can do it so at their own school. We will create a different kind of opportunity in the evening, possibly at East High School, but it'll be targeting a different cohort of students. Those who are 17 or older and looking for a different kind of high school experience as they march toward graduation. But if you have a group of students, Ms. Washington, I would love to engage and talk about that, but then give you the rationale for it.
Do we want this transition this year or are we talking for next year?
We're talking about September.
Is that all, Ms. Washington?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Mister, information is power, we have it. There's no reason why we can't change things around with this great information that we have. Anything else, Mr. Superintendent, in terms of your report?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. That concludes the Superintendent's Report. Before I move on, I want to, again, thank our Franklin facility, our, the principals for allowing us to be here. I'm gonna ask them just to come to the podium and maybe tell us a little bit about the facility that we are in. I'm always amazed at how big this school is physically, whenever I'm in here. So principals, please feel free to come forward.
Once again, good evening, everyone. We thank the board and the community for the opportunity to serve here at the Franklin Educational Campus. My name is Ali Abdoumatine. I'm the principal at the International Finance School here. And I would like to first acknowledge the Superintendent for the work that you're doing, and we thank you for this opportunity. We'd certainly like to acknowledge our commissioners who oversee the entire operation of our district, our honored guests, parents and families, and certainly all of our community partners who provide a significant amount of support to our students. We really appreciate all of you, and we thank you and we welcome you to our campus. We, the, and my colleagues, Dr. Sam Rodriguez, Ms. Donna Gattalero Anderson, and Dr. Mary Aronson, and myself, are very pleased that we've had this honor to participate here tonight, for you to participate during this significant time, Women's History Month celebration. Our building, simply put, is the largest building in the City School District, 443,000 square feet. As you see, our facility here has been renovated over the last two years. Very pleasant place. We have significant work scheduled for the summer. And if you have ever the opportunity to tour our building, you'll see that we have new science rooms, computer labs. The building is fully wireless. We have the Montessori School. We're the only building in the district that has a K to 12 program. So we're very pleased and very honored that we distinguish ourselves in such fine fashion. There's a lot more that certainly we need and could use and look forward to the support that the board has offered us. And I'd like to ask any of my colleagues to come forward and speak about their particular program.
I had to go back to my notes again, I'm kind of a no person. The Bioscience and Health Careers High School at the Franklin Education Campus is located on the third floor of the complex. Franklin Bioscience at this point is a work in progress. We're establishing strong college partnerships with RIT, Nazareth College, and Ithaca College. We're also excited about enhancing our commitment and expanding our community relationships with Rochester General Hospital, Exelis, Strong Memorial Hospital, and the Rochester Museum and Science Center. We thank you for your support as we work to bring new and improved programs to our school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Bredard and Board Commissioners. I would like to also welcome you here to our campus. And contrary to what you have heard, the Montessori School is very proud- And contrary to what you have heard, the Montessori School is very proud to be here. So we receive excellent attention as our children get an excellent education here. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. We'll make this kind of quick. Global Media Arts High School, just like Bioscience, we're a work in progress. We've got an amazing group of teachers who are working diligently, and I mean every single minute of every day, to define what we have to offer students. Global Media Arts High School, we've got an amazing TV studio and we're looking to work with the folks back here so that we can give our children some honest and real opportunities to practice what they're learning here. So look out for GMA in the next couple of years, we're going to blow some socks off. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
And I'll close with the fact that we're searching and really seeking to establish the niche of international finance. As you can see, we have the Advantage Federal Credit Union here in our building as a partnership. It's one of the programs, it's one of the places that our students actually take courses and they actually run the credit union. So any of you who have accounts, you could come here, you could access those accounts and get the same service here as you would at any Advantage Credit Union throughout the county. We're also international, and I'll close with this. Dr. Urbanski always asks, what makes you international? And that's a question that kind of continually plagues me. We have worked though to establish why we are international compared to, you know, some other school. What is our niche? We offer two courses, two foreign languages now, French and Spanish. So we are also working to establish this IC3, which is an international certification that would be recognized as our students begin to move out of our building into the outer community. So we're looking to, we're CTE, Career and Technical Education Endorsed Program as well. So we're really looking to push and develop great opportunities for our students within the facility and within each individual school. We thank you for coming out tonight and we're available for questions if you have them at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for allowing us to use your facility. We are now going to move into board reports, standing committee reports. We took care of the approval of the Student Activities Fund and also the monthly financial reports that we usually give in the Finance Committee Report. I'm going to give the President's Report, but I'm going to start with giving the Quality Assurance Committee Report, filling in for Vice President White who had to take leave. The Quality Assurance Committee met on Wednesday, March 12th to discuss the possibility of changing the committee's name to be more in the alignment with the committee's duties and responsibilities. The QA Committee also received a presentation on the Scholastic Read 180 Program. The committee briefly discussed how systems that provide student information should be integrated. The committee also recommended that anyone with suggestions on the name for this committee forward their suggestions to one of the committee members. And I believe the committee members of Quality Assurance are Commissioners Campos, Commissioners Williams, and obviously the Chair, Commissioner White. Commissioner White also visited the Monroe County Jail on March 25th. He visited, he wasn't taken there, he was just visiting. He visited the Monroe County Jail on March 25th to discuss with a group of youth ages sixteen to eighteen years old, the reasons why they dropped out of school and what they would have made, would have made them stay in school. He will be submitting a report with recommendations to the superintendent and his colleagues on the board. He wants to give a special thank you to District Employee Margaret Porter for assisting with facilitating the visit. The next QA meeting will be held on April 10th at 5:30. Just briefly, under the President's Report, this is always, it's always good to talk about good news. I like to deliver good news, we hear enough about bad news all the time. Both East and Charlotte Boys Basketball Teams advanced to the Section Five Quarterfinals earlier this month. My congratulations, our, the entire, congratulations to these young men, their parents and their coaches. The winner 2007-2008 Sportsmanship Award was presented to the Edison Swim Team in February by the Rochester Monroe County Certified Swimming and Diving Official. This award recognized our athletes for going above and beyond what is normally expected to promote sportsmanship and reflects their courtesy, respect, encouragement, fairness, good judgment, and team spirit. And we were even prouder to announce that Wilson, Freddie Thomas, and Charlotte were also nominated for this award. The Wilson X-Cats earned a gold medal at the Regional First Robotics Competition earlier this year. So congratulations to Wilson. As I said, you know, we hear so much about the negative things that go on in our community sometimes, it's always good to be able to report the positive things. And I'm sure I could have reported on much more, but again, congratulations to those young people and their families and their teachers and our parents. We will start with the Student Leadership Congress, right? Is that Student Leadership Congress or Student Leadership Committee? Student Leadership Congress, Congress. So Congresswoman Washington, you want to give us your report?
Yes, sir. March 5th, we, okay, first off, we have a partnership with school number twenty-two students, this is our second year. March 5th, we actually met our students, so we greeted them, conversation, exchanged numbers, email addresses and whatnot. March 19th, we actually went to a basketball game where number twenty-two school from Vikings played against their teachers. So it was a game, Vikings had about twenty-two students playing basketball, and teachers actually won, they won by one point. So it's an incredible game, we ate, took pictures, conversation, their hot dogs were incredible. Once again, our main goal is to mentor them, to help them with any problems they have at home, their school life, building situations, and to focus on their transition from elementary school to junior high school. That's our main focus. Our next activity will be a public service announcement, we did one last year, we actually put it into a couple of contests, sport field contests, contests, sorry. And this year, we are undecided about what our game will be for our PSA, but we know that our week students, once again, this year will help us, so they will be doing the lighting, the cameras and everything, so we're looking forward to that also. Last week, last week Thursday, I and a member of Student Leadership Congress, Sarah DeMoss, we actually started on Citywide, Channel 15, it's also on other shows, but we did a television show basically about Student Leadership Congress, our goals, our passions, so hopefully you can watch that, Citywide, Channel 15. Oh, school number fifty-eight, they have, they opened a student restaurant, so managed, the students literally created their own restaurant. It is called, you might want to help me out with this, Ms. Campos, it's called Burrito Tera, how do you say it?
Buriterra.
What? Buriterra.
Buriterra?
Yes. So it's a burrito restaurant. Today they had it ready open, so I just wanted to say congratulations to the students at school number fifty-eight. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Ms. Washington, I know that you are on your way, you're a big-time senior now. When does the Student Leadership Congress hold their elections for your replacement?
That's like under the table, that's discussed between my advisors and I, but I don't know if we actually hold it. But I also wanted to say something to the superintendent, you actually reminded me that I have a paper for APS, AP, Women's History, due tomorrow.
Get on it.
Women's History, so I...
Now, we know you're valedictorian, but you still got to do that work.
Yeah.
No senioritis.
No senioritis. Commissioner Williams and the Audit Committee.
Yes. Mr. President, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, April 3rd at noon for the Audit Committee. And at that meeting, the main agenda item will be, we'll go through the RFPs for the independent auditor. And as a result, as a result of the meeting, what we look to do is to make a recommendation to the full board in terms of who we will choose. At that point, we will then go back to the city, because it'll be a joint decision between the city and the school board.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos.
Well, first, I would like to thank Franklin for hosting us because the amount of spirit walking into this school was just amazing. Escorted by student representatives, on top of that, you have a TV playing with a group that's called The Peacemakers. They had their video that they put together, just amazing, that's what this is about. So thank you so much for hosting us. Before I give my report, also, I was able to make some school visits over to school number twenty-two, which is Principal Pantoja over there. And when I went to go and visit, the amount of collaboration in that school, the open environment, the teachers were just fantastic. I was able to walk into the classrooms and just observe, and the dedication that they have to those students is pretty amazing, especially because in that school, there's a high level of poverty. So these teachers are really, really dedicated to the success of their kids. And also at school number twelve, we, I was able to go to see the play on Frederick Douglass, and Michelle Lompe, who's the principal there, invited me. And it was really great because what that play did is it was able to teach the kids history, but in a very current way, to engage the students so that they can understand the history. So it was an absolutely wonderful experience. So thank you very much to those two schools. The CIGR Committee, we met on March 10th. The Partnership Council representatives were unfortunately unable to attend the meeting, and they will be rescheduled. We approved a motion to change the committee name to Community and Intergovernmental Partnerships. And we did this because we really want to be able to portray that openness of the board and transparency of that committee. And we respectfully request that this motion be forwarded by the President to the Policy Committee as it will require an amendment to the board bylaws. Also, we also request that an additional proposed amendment to the bylaws be assigned to policy by the President. We voted to recommend that the monthly order of business be amended to have meetings begin with student recognitions. So the first order would be to be able to highlight our students and what's going well in the district. As President Evans said, we hear enough about the bad news, we need to hear about the good news and things that are going well in this district. So that's another request. And also a special thank you to Commissioner Brennan for bringing this up at our meeting because we're interested in the review of the board's overarching process. And what I mean by that is the Standing Committee System, huh, a lot of stuff to say. I'm out of breath, that never happens.
So much for the good news.
I know. We discussed this briefly at our meeting, March 10th, and in our role as facilitators of the board's working relationship with the members of the Rochester community, without rendering any sort of judgment on the merits of the Standing Committee System versus a full board approach to doing business, we believe the issue is worth exploring and to that end, we recommend that the President delegate the study of this issue. Basically, what we're trying to do is see what, how we can work the most effective, in the most effective fashion as a board and be transparent to the community and to everyone. So it's really looking at what type of reform governance we can have in order to be able to be effective and do the best job that we possibly can. And at our meeting, we also heard a presentation from Beverly Jackson of RMBDC on her work with the district from April 2006 through December 2007 regarding minority women business enterprise development. Our next meeting is Thursday, May 1st at 5:30. As always, fellow commissioners and the public are most definitely encouraged to join us. And that meeting will be held in Conference Room 3A at the central office. And we'll welcome Commissioner White at that point. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. We will take up the items that, the action items that came out of your committee under new business. Commissioner Brennan, Policy Committee.
Yes, the Policy Committee will meet on Tuesday, April 15th at 6:00 PM, and we have a variety of agenda items. Most important are, and this is not listed in order of importance, but setting a review schedule for several policies with articulated evaluation processes that have not been followed in the past, something we've been deficient on in the past and something that we need to address. Discussion of Policy 5153, Parent Preference Managed Choice Amendments, the proposed amendment to 6725, Responsible Bitter, and an amendment to 5100, dealing with attendance and participation. Commissioners Powell, White, and Elliott have taken the lead on all three of those issues, and we look forward to their participation as well. Finally, or not finally, but in addition to that, setting a timeline for the annual review of the Code of Conduct. We made a commitment last year to review this document in the spring going forward. And the preliminary plan includes written communication before the end of this month to stakeholder groups, including parents seeking input. And we'll likely schedule a public hearing on the code for early May with a subsequent committee meeting. At this point, we anticipate a formal recommendation to the board in May for updates. The schedule is tentative pending the amount of input we receive, and we plan to give parents every opportunity to comment. This is an effort to get this done earlier. We had input last summer from parents that it might be more helpful to them if this opportunity took place during the school year because of the impact of vacations, and we're happy to do that. I thought it was a good suggestion and a good step forward. We've also been spending a great deal of our time dealing with the tardy review of parent involvement in school-based planning team policies. This is an extremely difficult issue, and this will be taken up, the first in a long step of efforts to improve our performance in this area at the Policy Committee Meeting on the 15th. But there's been a great deal of activity that has preceded that that I'd like to comment about just briefly. First of all, we as a board and the new superintendent here have to make, have to have a comprehensive philosophical discussion among ourselves and have to make a commitment one way or the other about whether or not we favor parent involvement, whether or not we're really committed to that concept. I personally am, I can't speak for anybody else. I recognize its difficulties, but what we should not be doing is saying we have that commitment when we don't as a body. And I think that's been at the root of a lot of the difficulty that we've been encountering. On March 12th, in response to the request of a citizen activist who has done quite a bit of research on these issues, I hosted, not a hearing as was commonly understood and reported, but a meeting held on the date that was requested by this activist who indicated to me that she could produce some one hundred people, either providing written testimony or verbal testimony of noncompliance with our parent involvement and site-based planning team policies. That's existing policies, not even the changed or reviewed ones. Now, you know, she sent out an alert to the people she communicates with, I don't know how many people that is. We also did a news release, and we notified our existing parent involvement networks within the district. We didn't get an enormous turnout, but I think we got a lot of useful information. And I think it was a good first step in beginning, at first in us beginning to listen. And as we sort this issue out, we really need to do this, I think, as a board with some humility. First, because we haven't been as diligent as we should have been, and I'm as big an offender as anyone else in addressing this issue. And secondly, because of the level of frustration that parents feel about this issue is immense, they need to vet, among other things, and we need to begin to respond to the substance of the concerns that they've raised. Two people who will be speaking of this issue tonight, Lenny Williams and Anita Jones spoke at the hearing and, as usual, had some pretty incisive things to say. I would urge every member of the community, every board member, every interested person to go to the board's website and plow through the transcript of that several hours-long meeting. This is not the end of the process, this is the beginning. This is the beginning of knowledge, and the beginning of knowledge, I think, is to, the beginning of wisdom, is to understand when you're not doing as good a job as you should have been doing. And I hope that this is the first step to deal with that. Something that needs to be pointed out by way of follow-up is that the transcript is now on the web. We had hoped to have the Policy Committee Meeting on March 19th to follow up the March 12th meeting. To give you some idea of the difficulty of this issue, we encountered kind of a semi-humorous, semi-disturbing situation at the end of that meeting. We've often taught sometimes about the resistance that you often see at the administrative level to direct board communication with citizens about this issue. That's the stereotype, and frankly, it's a stereotype because there's a lot of truth to it. There is, I think, insufficient administrative commitment to parent involvement. And too many parents have come to me and said they feel unwelcome, they feel that the process does not work in a way that engages them in a meaningful way, that we're paying essentially lip service to parent involvement but finding all sorts of ways to not really have parent involvement. There's also, I think, another problem, and that is people are either believing the hype that they should be afraid, parents now, to come directly to board members when there is noncompliance with our policies and they do have issues, actually feeling that they should be afraid to do that. And perhaps that leads to them feeling that they have to deal with surrogates or gatekeepers or people who purport to represent their best interests and sometimes do and sometimes don't. Part of sorting this out is that all of us, parents, board members, are going to have to have the courage... to have the courage and the forthrightness and the persistence to deal directly with each other, to build relationships, to not allow the communication that ought to be occurring be monitored by gatekeepers. This is, this is unhelpful. It was bad enough, it was bad enough, that when we left that, that meeting on March 12th and attempted to pick up the sign-in sheets that had the contact information, because the purpose of the meeting was to discuss and learn about noncompliance and about areas, about, about specific examples of where the system broke down, so that we could actually begin to develop enforcement mechanisms that would make the policy more effective. And that, and, and there was also a commitment made that when people, that, that people who took the trouble to come and talk to us and had specific concerns that could be addressed quickly, that it would be followed up, they would be followed up with quickly. Well, we went to pick up the contact information that we left outside the meeting, and it was stolen. It was taken. Contact information wasn't there. And for about a day or so, we speculated that, you know, about whether or not did an administrator pick it up? Was the, was the information misplaced? No, a, a security camera revealed that one of the people who came and spoke to us took the list. Simply took the list from us. And it was a person who, in the course of speaking to us at that meeting, denigrated our effort to, to even pursue the issue, basically saying that if you hadn't solved the problem by now, how can we believe you're serious about solving it at this time? Which I think is, is an unhealthy attitude. These are the, this is the kind of mistrust, this is the kind of activity that every thoughtful parent, board member, administrator ought to condemn and disassociate themselves from. This is not typical of the people who spoke at the meeting, or of this community generally. And we have to work, as we, as we deal with this issue, we have to work a lot harder than we have to, to encourage direct communication between board members and concerned citizens and, and deal with their issues. I apologize to those people who have not been followed up with as quickly as I had hoped because the contact information was stolen. We have recovered it from the individual who took it. Those of you that, in the community who I've interacted with over the course of the past some days, thank you. Your input is invaluable. Those of you who I haven't gotten back to yet, this has been a full-time job for me for the past week. Over the next week, I anticipate I will be back in touch with everybody. And I appreciate your patience. I appreciate people's involvement and passion and engagement about this issue. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan. And thank you also for holding that meeting. I would urge everyone to read that transcript that is online from the meeting. I spent all day Saturday, when it wasn't all day, I read pretty quickly. I spent part of the day Saturday reading the transcript from that meeting. Any other, any questions from my colleagues on committee reports? Hearing none. We will, do we have any unfinished business from previous meetings, Madam Clerk? I don't believe we do. Under new business, Commissioner Campos, can you just run through your recommendations one more time?
Okay. We request that a motion be forwarded by you to the Policy Committee to require the amendment of the board bylaws to Community and Intergovernmental Partnerships. The name change.
Do I have a motion to forward to the? Okay. That's why I don't have to. I was going to ask for motions. I was going to be Democratic, but otherwise, that, that is so forward, it will go to the Policy Committee.
And then also, we request an additional proposed amendment to the bylaws, that it be assigned to Policy, so that we can, we recommend that the monthly order of business be amended to have meetings begin with a student, with student recognitions.
I will also forward that to Policy. I know we did that last month. We had Timothy Mitchum perform. He did an admirable job. And the next item?
And the last item is in regards to the reform governance, looking at how we function as a governing body and looking at delegating the study of this issue so that we can be more effective.
Thank you, Commissioner. That is a very important topic, and I think it's important that the entire board is engaged in that discussion. So, what I will do within the next two weeks is submit a date for a retreat for board members to discuss this issue strictly. The topic will strictly be on board committees, board structure. And then hopefully, as an outcome of that retreat, we can decide whether or not we need to appoint a ad hoc committee to study the issue, but I'll get a date out ASAP.
And just as a recommendation, that's one of the things that we spoke about, is making sure that there is an ad hoc, so that there is follow-up and we can do some research. Because we're not asking just to do something, just quickly and make that quick decision, but to have the research behind it, because many school boards function this way and they have action sessions as opposed to that. So, just making sure that that might be, that could be an outcome.
Absolutely. And I, and I think that it, it will be very instructive for us to have these conversations in terms of streamlining operations. And I, and I know that, I'm sure there'll be a diversity of opinion amongst the seven folks here on, on the board. And we don't want to, to, to the colleagues that may disagree or agree with it, we don't want to just ram it down their throats. So, I think having a, a conversation will be good, and I will get a date within the next two weeks, and we'll deal exclusively with committee outcomes. And I'll also make sure that we keep the superintendent in the loop as we progress on that topic. That concludes new business, unless there's any other new business to come before it's board. Hearing none, we will move to speakers on other than agenda items. We have a list of five. Each speaker will have three minutes. We didn't bring the bell here, so we're going to ask the principals of the school to ring the bell that students use when they, just kidding. The clerk has her, has her trusty cellphone there, so she will keep track on three minutes. And when you have three minutes, when you, when you have about 30 seconds left, I will ask you to conclude. And then when the time is up, I will just tell you that your time is up. First up, we have Anita Jones, who is a parent, and she'll be speaking on parent involvement and the safety of our children.
First, I would like to thank you all for bringing this to Franklin. Franklin is my children's school, the Bioscience Academy. My oldest daughter started here, who's 30 years old now, and she was one of the first students in the Bioscience. She ended up with a full scholarship. That shows you that schools work for the betterment of our children. I want to thank Commissioner Brennan for hosting that meeting and giving parents a voice. My goal is parental involvement. I got involved in school because of parental involvement and to give my children a voice and the public safety of our children. I called today to speak at this meeting. I asked your representative what was the agenda topics, so that I didn't have to, you know, wait till the end of the meeting until everything was over. We don't get that information in advance, so it's very hard to speak to those agenda topics. I'm very tired. I'm a mom of five. I get up 5:00 in the morning. I go out and I volunteer in your schools to make sure children are safe every day. I think that, you know, if we are told that we only have three minutes to speak, that, and we have, and you have an agenda that you need to go through, we should get those agendas, so we can know what decisions you are making on behalf of our children. I've, I've met most of you. I welcome you, Mr. Bizzard, to Rochester City School District. When I first met you, it was in kind of a negative way. I've given letters to every member of the board, I don't know if you received them or not, about my personal situation. I haven't, I'm not going to bring that up here, because I was very excited tonight when I seen the young ladies receiving those awards. And the way that young lady spoke about her mother being her support system when her father died, and yet she's still here, that shows you that there are so many parents like me that are in the City School District and are willing to work in cooperations with our parents, I mean, with our teachers and our administrators. And we're kind of blocked. And I've been a volunteer for all of your committees, and at different times, your Parent Partnership Council, that now you're changing the name for, and a lot of different committees, to try to make sure that parents have a voice. I really even didn't feel that, you know, good about even this, being on the agenda and waiting, have to wait to the end of the night to even speak, when I asked every time, what's the agenda? What's the agenda item? So, I could know, so that I could speak according to what you have on the agenda, so I wouldn't, you know, have to wait to then, because I'm really tired. And now I still got to get home to my children and get them ready for school tomorrow. You have tremendous parents out here in this district. You do meetings. This school right here is on the sir list. I got a letter from this school to tell me that my child's school is on the sir list. You know how many parents was at that meeting? Me. New York State Department of Education came to this school to talk to parents about what, what is needed, what we could do to improve this school, and it was me there. I got a letter two days before the meeting. That's fair to parents. I don't think that's fair to parents. And the question should be asked, ask, "Do you truly want parental involvement?" Dr. Bizzard, you went to the principals, you went to cafe meetings, you went to different organization meetings, but you haven't called us. You haven't called the parents to you, so you could hear from us. And we could build a relationship together, because it's about relationship, and these are our children. We leave our most precious gift in the hands of teachers, administrators, and people to make sure they get a quality education. We haven't done that good. I think we can do better. I believe in this school, I put my, my other two children here. In a failing school, my children, my oldest son is getting letters from college already. In this school right here, a girl who I was told that wasn't going to read in fourth grade is reading. She's on your honors program. Our children are great children. They get too many fingers pointing at them. I think it's us adults that need to look at each other and do a little bit better for our children. And I hope that you would address the letters that I gave you, because if you don't address them, then I'm going to have to try to find another way of addressing them. I got 150 parents at a parent meeting. Me, a parent. I got 150 parents at a parent meeting in the summer. I think we could do a little bit better to get more parents involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ron Ring. Ron Ring here? Mr. Ring? Sandra Lake.
Hey, Sandy.
Hi. Because of the time constraint, I think I'd, I'd better read this, although I am speaking from my heart. I wondered until I heard the other speaker and I heard your agenda, if what I had to say was appropriate, but I think it is. When I moved, first moved here, as I remember, about 10 years ago, I think Franklin was a big problem school. And what I'm seeing now shows, you know, great improvement. But anyway, bear with me. Oh, I need to give you a little background information. I'm, I'm a citizen. I have a grown-up child, not a part of this district. I participate in a group on Thursdays located at 1933 East Main Street. And we're a bunch of citizens who get together and discuss and try to problem-solve problems within the east side of the community. So, anyway, I'm here tonight to encourage the board and the superintendent to put into effect immediately extra safety measures to protect the daily performance of the students at East High. At a panel on violence at the Dryden Theater six weeks ago or so, Dr. Bizzard shockingly stated there had been almost 800 incidents at East High so far during the school year. The DNC referred to seven of the incidents as riots. I would like for the students of East High to feel safe these last 10 weeks of school in an environment conducive to study, without the disturbance of their school day with these types of incidents. During the 2001 and 2002 school years, there were three school resource officers at East High. Officer Corey Brown was promoted to First Sergeant and was never replaced. Officer Ron Rafferty also left East and was never replaced. Officer Moses Robinson is still at East, but alone to cover this large campus. According to Dr. Beverly Pringle, there existed prior to her arrival, a 41% graduation rate at the high school, and I'm sure it is her goal to improve the rate. I know too, as prince, as principal, Dr. Pringle has really gotten down to the business of educating her students, as she even implemented a policy when she first arrived in the fall, stating students were not to leave the building during their school day, even for lunch at McDonald's across the street. I really feel Dr. Pringle has the highest good of the students in her heart and mind, and she almost seems to consider them as her own children. According to Jim Shepherd, well, Jim Shepherd first met with our group of citizens his fourth day on the job, which we all thought was rather awesome. According to Mr. Shepherd's assessment, only 10% of the almost 2,000 students at East are a problem, and I have no reason to doubt his assessment. In fact, he shared some of his findings with our group the day following his initial assessment, and only a few weeks into his new role and new job. There are 34 doors to this building, which can only be locked from the outside only during the day, and naturally, this is because of fire codes. However, might it be possible for a student to open a locked door from the inside to allow entrance to a trespassing troublemaker? I do not believe the sentries and Officer Robinson can cover all the doors. My primary concern now, though, is the 90% of non-trouble-causing students at East who need to be preparing for finals and Regents exams. Should their, their safety be jeopardized? Should their instruction day be disturbed by the 10%? Could not the SORs, or SROs, who were never replaced, be replaced on a temporary basis until the sentries, who have been promised to East, are hired, better trained, and begin to work at the school next fall? It must be by careful consideration the temporary SROs be chosen, though, since they would have to be capable of working with teenagers and not work in a Gestapo-type manner. I might even think the recently retired RPD members may be helpful to this effort as they were in downtown Rochester during Zero Tolerance. I did a little bit of research, and I know that retired officers helped the Holly School District during their safety-concern crisis. And that, that's a large school, too. Mr. Shepherd and Officer Robinson would, however, be a better judge of who would best serve than I. Thank you, and I hope I have persuaded you to take immediate safety precautions to assure East High students of being able to finish their school year without dangerous or even interfering distraction.
Thank you. And when I think of 34 doors, I think about my good friend Joe Clark putting chains on the doors, but I know we can't do that in our schools, but. Next up, Mr. Glennie Williams. Glennie Williams will be followed by Richard Hendricks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Make it quick, because I, I actually came tonight to be a little feisty, but these, these young ladies were just so good that I, you mushed me. Are you made? I can't beat you up tonight. But I, I will be back to be strong again, but not tonight. I would like to cite this two things that were sort of mentioned. One i- is around parent involvement. We really, I just heard another incident that show, that shows what we're concerned about. When you talk about that you're going to look at how you might structure your, your committees, it seems to me that it'd be reasonable to talk, because one reason you structure your committees, I believe, is for transparency and for parents to be able to engage what's happening in the district. So, if you're going to look at restructuring it, I think you should talk to some of the parents, or parent leaders at least, so that you can at least get their input on the restructuring. I didn't hear that name when you were talking. That's the kind of thing that we parent leaders keep wondering, because when you keep talking about us like in the third person, this, what your restructuring would do, that transparency you're talking about, is with us. So, it seems like maybe you talk with us, so we can structure it. Two, and, and another reason why you mushed me tonight, I was going to come and talk to the superintendent, because last year, with the last superintendent, we did a lot of work and came up with the Contract for Excellence, where we focused on class size and reducing class size. Because we found that there's ample evidence across the country that class sizes, and I'm going to say a number that, that research says, around 15 do real, has real impact on urban kids and making a difference. And so, we had worked and started using that money for class size, and then Mr. Bizzard, this year, refocused it a little bit and started using it for charity school. But now I've heard what he's doing in charity school, I will go back to our people and we will, I think we might agree with you. But that again shows what our problem is. Somehow, I wish we had have been, because AQE, we actually helped get that money, and one of the things in the money was, we were supposed to be talked to when the new, new year comes up every year. We were supposed to be part of the discussion, the planning process. We were supposed to be part of the discussion, the planning process. We weren't. Again, that's the kind of thing I'm, we're talking about when we talk about parent involvement. I know we got the money because I went to Albany half-blind to help get it. So therefore, when it's time for us to have input and we're not found, then I say, hey, this is again what we're talking about by lack of parent involvement. Finally, and I hope, I will leave it at this, as some people have heard, Wilson's a great school. I looked, I was gonna complain about Wilson, I looked and it was number two. I said, hey, what, how could I complain about number two? But there are some concerns at Wilson, and we're hoping that, Mr. Bazzard, you will look at those and do something about them. And with that, I'm gonna leave because I, I say again, I know all of the kids are gone, are young people, young people are gone, but those women were powerful, they were inspirational, and as long as we keep producing those kids, I guess I should only be a little mad. Thank you.
Thank you, Glennie.
Now, Mr. President, we know the secret of not getting beaten up.
That's right.
So we can use this at all of our board meetings.
That's right. Glennie, we're having him come to every board beating now. Richard Hendricks. Taught me chemistry.
I didn't really want to follow Glennie, I thank the two ladies who screwed him out a little bit. If I could give a copy of these. I brought a copy of what I wanted to talk about in case you need something to read over breakfast tomorrow morning. Honestly, I'm far too extemporaneous to actually read off of this, but I wanted to address the issue of reducing suspensions within the school. I know it's a target focus of you and your group. I admire that your ambition to not suspend kids, and I understand the logic behind doing that. I'm concerned however about the manner of suspension which would just ignore a problem or just make suspensions a thing of the past. Because to me, it's tantamount to just saying, well, if we have too many people in trouble, let's stop arresting people. I don't think that it makes the problem go away. I think that the true way to address this is to address that when the problem is small, to prevent the problem from getting large. And I think that you probably have heard in earful at some of these other gatherings from teachers about what's happening in the school, and I don't think we need to go into it, but the behaviors are getting worse. And all of us understand that a classroom that's chaotic is a classroom where nobody learns. And we don't want schools to be chaotic, and we want to have the kids addressed properly. I think that I should note this year that since my assignment is different, I've taken on a completely different point of view on this. I used to think that all this behavior from some of the kids was due to the home life, that perhaps the apple is not falling far from the tree. And during my phone calls this year, I'm finding the opposite to be true. I'm finding something even more scary than that. I think that after judging from the phone calls that I have, that virtually none of our parents are crazy. Virtually all of them feel that they want the schools to be safe, that they want the classroom to be under control, that they would probably be appalled to see what their own children are doing in school. So I have kind of a theory that I thought I should express. And that is that perhaps we are teaching them this bad behavior. We, the schools, are teaching them this bad behavior. And I wonder if you probably think that that's kind of bizarre, and I kind of came to that, I kind of thought, this is kind of a scary thought to me. How could we be teaching them this behavior? And I'm gonna suggest that it is by repeatedly stating a set of rules, perhaps even publishing them on our calendar, under code of conduct, and then repeatedly ignoring them when the rules are broken. The de facto set of rules speaks much louder than the written set of rules for our students. When they see countless examples of student after student performing the most bizarre behaviors without any consequence whatsoever, they learn rather quickly what is in fact allowed and what is not in fact allowed. We can write rules, but if we fail to enforce them, the kids are gonna learn what they should learn. Now, in many behavioral models, we use the 80-15-5 model. I've heard this theory many times where in any sort of clear, consistent set of consequences, 80% of the people will follow the rules the way that they're stated as long as they know what they are. 15% will need some cajoling, you'll have to push them along a bit. And there's usually 5% that no matter what you do, they're not following your rules. And the problem with that model that's repeatedly stated is that we tend to allocate resources in the sort of the flip-flop manner. We tend to say, well, let's focus a lot of attention on a group of kids that absolutely will not follow our rules no matter how we put them together. So I would encourage you to focus your attention far more on the 95% of the kids that we have and the parents that we have that want the schools to be a safe place where education takes place. And I think that, there's some people that agree with me. All right, it's good that the parents agree with me. So I guess I'm concerned when I hear the term each and every student because we can and should be concerned about each and every student, but we should also not be, we should also be cognizant that 95% of our population can and probably will perform a whole lot better in an environment that's far less chaotic and under control. So how do we go about changing some of those student behaviors? I have kind of an outline of what my plan is, but the first thing I would do is stop lying to them. I know it sounds kind of silly, but when we say that you have to do this and they know perfectly well that they don't have to do this, and so do we, we're lying to them. When we say you can't use your cellphone, and they can use their cellphone, and when they do, nothing will happen to them, it's a lie. So when you establish policies, I would encourage you to get rid of the policies that you have no intention of enforcing anyway, rather than to actually state somewhat of a lie. I would begin to come up with a model where the only ones that really can control the building just by nature of the number of them are the teachers. Now I know that we have some overzealous teachers, but I know that most of our teachers can be trained to talk to a kid one-on-one without the benefit of an audience in a way that they can respond in an adult manner where we could, we say, well, you know what your behavior is, you know, we can't let you do that in this classroom, and most kids respond to that quite well. But if we can't get them to stay after school to do that because de facto they don't have to, then we're never gonna get to that point. So I would encourage a little bit of training. I would be glad to work with the RTA to get them to understand that some of the teachers do need some training. We can't call parents when we're at the peak of frustration with a parent, that's not the time to call them, it's probably a little better to wait and, you know, until you're a little more calm and just simply explain the problem. And most parents are, all the parents that I've spoken to this, you're very receptive. So I encourage you to establish a policy where whatever the teacher's reasonable consequence is, it simply sticks. I think that would eliminate a lot of the problems that we have, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Next meeting, public hearings, 2008-2009 Budget and Contract for Excellence, April 7th and 21st, 6:00 p.m. Board Study Session on Resolutions, April 23rd. Board Business Meeting, April 24th, 2008, at 6:30. That will take place back at Central Office on Broad Street. You can always feel free to visit the board's website at rcsdk12.org/boe for all information on meetings. Again, a special thanks to Franklin High School and their students and the principals for allowing us to use your facility. And thank you all for coming out tonight. Get home safely, thank you. That concludes, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
For adjourn. Yeah, I know folks are getting a little worried. I heard about the meeting last night, I gotta call George Moses and tell him everything. Yeah, oh yeah, no, but I want to.